Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is citizen input. Does anyone in the audience have anything they would like to bring to the attention of the committee? Okay. Oh, yes. And please be reminded that this meeting may be audio and video recorded. Okay. The next item is student reports. Alicia, do you have any report this evening?
Yes, I do. This particular report that I've prepared focuses solely on our last meeting with Dr. Crowe with the five of us. This meeting took place on August 2nd. One of the biggest topics of this meeting was the construction on David Proudy. We were very pleased to hear that extensive asbestos abatement has been done at David Proudy and is still going on. Extensive cleaning has also been done at Proudy and as well as at East Brookfield. This construction should be done in time to move in the newly purchased SMARTboards. These SMARTboards were purchased along with many other technological advances for our schools. These include Surface Pros, iPad Minis, Chromebooks, drones, GoPros, robots, Sprout computers, 3D printers, and Cublets. Along with this technology, new textbooks and library books have also been purchased for the high school. One of our biggest concerns was about scheduling, and our questions were directed with Ms. York. I actually just had a conversation with her, and the five of us plan on meeting with her separately. We were also given two important dates to remember. On September 10th, Cable Access will be holding an open house, and David Proudy will be open to show our new technology. On September 14th, there will be a presentation held by the police chief about the opioid crisis. The five of us are also very excited for this new year and to meet the new administration and work with them.
Thank you, Alicia. The next item is the secretary's report. We have before us the minutes of July 12th, 2016. If you've had the time to read them and review them, asking for approval. Motion to approve. Motion by Wendy.
Second.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. The next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Crowe, do you have a report this evening?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Everyone get comfortable, it's long. Which is a good thing because a lot has been going on for the past month. It doesn't seem possible, but in only 20 days, we will welcome back our staff members, and in 22 days, we'll be welcoming the incoming kindergarten class of 2029.
Oh, my God.
Exactly. OMG. That's what everybody says when I say that. This year, as we celebrate 50 years of Proudy High School, we will be celebrating so many other accomplishments as well. This summer has been truly a whirlwind of activity to correct our past problems and also to prepare us for our district's future. So first, there's some exciting innovations in the district that Alicia has just started to mention, and I have more to name. Science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics, more commonly referred to as STEAM education, is critical due to the fact that high-paying jobs in the STEM fields are increasing within an adequate pipeline of American students to fill them. So looking beyond the three eyes in today's connected world, students must become proficient in the four Cs as well: creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. In the Every Student Succeeds Act, more commonly referred to as ESSA, President Obama's goal was to train 100,000 STEAM teachers over the next 10 years. Many of these efforts are directed towards middle school and high school. However, current research indicates that introducing STEAM early in a child's education plays a key role in cognitive development and also sustained interest in these subjects later in educational careers. In elementary school, students are still learning with their eyes and hands: drawing, molding, manipulating objects. They're studying the transition to learning by reading, and robots make it possible for them to work through problems visually and experiment with concepts that they are learning. Much of math and science instruction in our schools is theoretical, and elementary school teachers are paving the way to look for engaging ways to bring STEM and STEAM to life in their classrooms. So, to support our students and prepare them adequately for the technological challenges of the future, our school district is launching robotics education as a STEAM activity during the 16, 17 school year. The primary objective of educational robotics is to provide a set of experiences to facilitate students' development of knowledge, skills, and attitudes for the design, analysis, application, and operation of the robots themselves. The term "robot" here is used broadly to include articulated robots, mobile robots, drones, or autonomous vehicles, devices of any scale. The rigor of the approach can be scaled back based on the background of the target audience and may be suitable for students across the entire educational spectrum, from elementary to high school. A secondary objective is to use robotics as a tangible and exciting application to motivate and facilitate instruction through topics such as computer programming, artificial intelligence, engineering design. So robotics. One of the most obvious and direct areas that drones can teach students about is robotics. Robots paired with STEAM curriculum engages students. It's a perfect way to introduce engineering concepts, math, science, and ELL standards, as well as encourage attendance and motivation. This is useful not just in learning principles of mechanical or electrical systems, but in honing analytical thinking skills necessary to understand how many different disciplines function together to make a single system work. And then, to make multiple systems work in harmony. In many ways, this is the basis for thinking about programming and bigger logic problems, as it requires if-then kind of thinking: if I do this, this event happens. For students who may eventually want to become engineers, this mental play is important because engineers are increasingly required to become jacks and jills of the trades with certain specialty areas rather than technical expertise in just one field. Basic knowledge of trigonometry can be essential in learning how to design and operate the drones. At an even higher level, drones can be used to teach concepts like Bernoulli's Principle as students learn how to predict things such as stall speed. This then leads into a host of other lessons in other disciplines. Electronics. As students wire their microcontrollers, they'll be learning basic principles of electronics, which they will then be able to use widely as they tinker and make things. Students will also learn about electricity as they come to understand the way that electric motors operate, which in turn leads to lessons in other disciplines again. Chemistry. Students must learn about battery chemistry and capacity in order to truly understand the drone design and function. Programming. Drones are controlled via a microcontroller that must be programmed. As such, building drones can be a great opportunity to learn programming skills. What's more, because the microcontroller uses open-source hardware and software, students can experiment with programming the microcontroller to do whatever they can dream up. One such idea is using iPads as the drone remote controls. And then last but not least, because it's one of the most important things that we're looking at, is perseverance and hands-on experience. As engineers will tell you, everything in engineering is an approximation of the real world. It's not uncommon for a theoretical plan to fail when it's fully realized, whether that be in the form of a drone that crashes or a bridge that collapses. Failure like this, especially when it comes to hands-on learning, teaches character and teaches perseverance. Because failure is inevitable, at some point, it becomes an important real point in learning and an inquisitive investigation as the student asks, "Why did my plan not work?" It takes tenacity for the student to move forward and to continually retry with a very open mind. And it just so happens that this is the very attitude that creates great learners who can be successful in any endeavor. So to that end, I want to revisit the district's improvement plan. This is our district improvement plan that has been approved by the school committee and states five major areas of a theory of action. The overriding goal is we will improve student learning and teaching quality and thereby narrow the achievement gap for all students if we ensure that all students have access to five major areas. The first one is safe, clean, learning environments. To address safe, clean learning environments, we have accomplished the following. Entryway water hogs were purchased. These are large logo mats. And security systems will be upgraded in each building. Each of the buildings will have those. There's a pest management protocol and schedule that's been instituted at each building on a regular, routine basis now. Knox Trail will get an updated paging system that will replace the failed one, and that's the one, we're expecting that to be done before the start of classes. All the buildings have had deep cleans. Those will be complete by the end of next week, and the only exception may be the high school because of the construction. The backflow preventer has been installed for the high school baseball irrigation. The high school roof will be finished theoretically by tomorrow. Mr. Carlstad?
Correct.
Is that correct? That's good news. And the abatement at the high school will be complete by the end of this week. The irrigation will be repaired and updated at the midfield. Mr. Carlstad is in discussions with the staff at Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical School to construct an equipment shed and then repair the entry and handicap access to the Blue House. So we're doing some cooperative ventures with them. The Bose speaker system has arrived. It will be installed in the press box on the high school upper field, and the new sound system and electronics will be installed before the first game. The new doors have been installed at the high school on B Building North entry and by the maintenance area. The new padding has been installed in the high school gym. School Dude software has been purchased to coordinate the more effective and efficient use of our school facilities. In addition, this software also allows us to inventory equipment and track its use. That includes the technology equipment we've just purchased. The high school gym floor is scheduled to be refinished in the next two weeks, and district-wide trainers and training for ALIS is in the works and will be done during convocation for the entire staff. The next major area in our theory of action is horizontally and vertically aligned curriculum. We've ensured that improvements are being made that will assist in providing this horizontal and vertical-aligned curriculum. Specifically, materials were purchased across the district for consistent implementation of Engage New York, Empowering Writers, and a new K-8 Pearson Science Series. The next area, major area, is high-quality data-informed instruction. In addition to administration analyzing DIBELS, MAP, and MCAS scores, which happens regularly, next week, August 15 through 17, we will be conducting a Data Team Institute for the district. Each building will be sending staff representatives, and participants will be trained how to analyze data and then plan data-informed practices that will improve achievement. These, quote, "data analysts" will then share the knowledge they've gained with colleagues in their respective buildings. The next area is rich learning resources and tools. The high school received $180,000 worth of new textbooks, and district-wide, there was $125 spent on needed resources. Knox Trail received $12,000 worth of additional MIMOs and document cameras for classroom use. New benches for sports teams and portable radios were purchased for the schools. As has previously been announced, this summer found the entire staff buzzing with positive vibes about the infusion of the technology resources being provided and all the opportunities for them to learn how to use the new devices. The purchases included $265,000 worth of SMARTboards. There were 55 SMARTboards purchased. $100,000 worth of Chromebook cards. 300 Chromebooks were purchased for across the district, and they will provide us with the ability to do the online testing in the mandated grades of four and eight in the spring, as well as students to be using those for instructional purposes during the school year. iPad Pros and charging stations came to $45,000. iPad Minis and charging stations for the younger students, $25,000. GoPro Hero 4 cameras, $2,600. Cublet robotic modules, $10,000 that will be distributed to all of the schools for K-8. Camera-equipped drones were given, one to each school. Each school received robots amounting to $750, and each school received a Make-A-Space HP Sprout, and one school received a 3D printer for a total of $9,000. In the next major area, internal and external systems that will support district initiatives. Clearly, you can see that there were technology improvements, but I would like to also mention one that has just happened, just this week, and that is that we have just most recently hired a technology integration specialist who will be functioning as an end-user support personnel for administration, teachers, and students. And is she here? Yes, she is. Christine Ghanatic is our new technology integration specialist. Please welcome her.
I'm super excited to be here in the district. I think there's a lot of great technology. I was at SMARTboard training today, started meeting some of the staff. Seems like a great place to be.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
We're excited to have Christine here. She brings a vast amount of experience with her. She's been integration specialist. She's worked in other districts where she has run robotics programs and taken students to nationals, so we're very excited to have her here. In addition, we have new and upgraded servers to make us more efficient. We have 150 computer replacements across the district. Aesop software for staff attendance and substitute coverage, and PD documentation is being implemented. Naviance Management System for Guidance and Career Exploration is K through 12, and actually will serve students even after they graduate. Increased custodial staffing that will ensure that we have clean buildings and we will be able to maintain the improvements that we've made. Enhancements for professional development that will support educators and staff include a district-wide, the establishment of the district-wide PD committee. That was established and then met for the purpose of assessing our training needs district-wide, vetting some teacher-driven PD proposals, and also then evaluating the sessions that were offered, so that we're always keeping an eye for the quality of the PD that we're providing. I'm very happy to announce that this summer, at Bridgewater State University, we had teachers from both middle school and high school participate in pre-AP as well as AP training, and that is certainly going to help to move our district forward. I'm really excited that middle school was able to attend. A school building needs committee has been established to revisit the idea of renovating the high school. New teacher's orientation will be held on August 24th and 25th, and Teachers 21 will be consulting with both administration and the teachers during the school year to support learning and teaching via a growth mindset. So as you can see, we've really taken a lot of time and effort and thought and money to address the concerns that were brought forward last year and the ones that were named in the district improvement plan. So we've made great strides, and we're very proud of the accomplishments that we've already made and are excited to start on the next phase. The opioid crisis, as you heard Alicia mention, is a follow-up to Chris Heron's May presentation that was done in North Brookfield, in which a number of members from this district participated. I've conferred with various organizations and agencies and also spoken with Chief Darren in concert with new principal Elizabeth York, because we've established a plan for addressing the issue by hosting a town hall public event on September 14th. This will be done at the high school. This September forum includes the district attorney's office, who is really behind this push. We're very concerned about this issue in our community, and it's not just our community, it's an issue in the state, it's an issue in the country around the globe, so we're looking forward to as much participation as possible for that. And then just, I wanted to remind people just some dates that are really important to remember for the staff: August 10th and 11th, so tomorrow and the following day, and then August 25th, last call for SMARTboard training during the summer. Otherwise, you have to wait for the school yet to get started to get trained. We still have openings there. We had huge turnouts. We had over 40 people have already been trained just in the past month. Administrative retreat will be in the 23rd, no, sorry, 22nd and 23rd. The new teacher orientation will be on the 24th and 25th. Convocation and training for compliance and ALIS training will be conducted on the 29th and 30th of August. And August 31st, we welcome that first kindergarten class, that 2029's coming, that's the first day of school for students. September 2nd to 5th, we have Spencer Fair, and September 10th, Food Drive, and Spencer Cable Open House with the Proudy 50th Celebration, and then the 14th, of course, is what I just mentioned. So we have a very busy schedule. So, lastly, I'd like to wish all the staff a relaxing last few weeks. It's almost over. See you all on August 29th. To the parents and the students, we look forward to welcoming you back to school on the 31st. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Does anyone on the committee have any comments about Dr. Crowe's report? I was, I happened to be at the office yesterday when Mr. Tomlin came in to say how many people had showed up for that training, and hopefully all the teachers will take advantage of that so that they'll be trained before school starts. I think it just shows that there is a lot of excitement out there about all this that's going on. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. Mr. Suter, you have a transfer report tonight?
I do. So tonight, we're going to do things slightly different this year than we did in the past in discussing this with the fiscal overseer. It seems pretty, it's burdensome to bring all these transfers to the committee. So what we've decided is we present the expenditure report by cost center. So in effect, it's by school. So as long as the principals can manage their budget within cost centers and they want to move money around, they will request to move the money. They'll bring that request to the superintendent, and she can authorize the transfer as long as it stays within their cost center. If it goes outside of that, we'll bring that to the committee. And we'll show, we'll give you a report every month of transfers that the superintendent has approved within cost center, and any other transfers that we need to bring before the committee, we will do that. So tonight, the only transfer that I have is actually within the school choice group of accounts. We were notified towards the end of June that the state was not going to fund the kindergarten grant that they had been funding in the past. So that was a $70,000 grant that funded part of a teacher's salary and several paraprofessional salaries. So the only option was to find that money in the budget. So what we've done is, as you know, the committee approved, and she's here tonight, hiring the tech integration specialist. So we took some of the funds that were allocated for the academic affairs, various expense accounts, and we allocated some of that money in addition to district-wide curriculum materials and textbooks. So the transfer is to transfer $2,500 from the academic affairs contracted services line, $1,000 from the academic affairs supplies and materials line, $1,500 from academic affairs membership and dues, $1,500 from academic affairs in-state travel, $20,000 from, that should read textbooks, district-wide textbooks and materials, and $43,500 from district-wide curriculum materials. And we'll transfer $16,000 of that to the kindergarten teacher's salary and $54,000 to the kindergarten paraprofessional's salary. So that's all coming within school choice. It won't affect the budget, and it's just reallocating some of the resources that we had anticipated spending out of school choice, but because we were able to do more at the end of the last fiscal year, some of those curriculum materials, we've already purchased, so we didn't need to, we didn't need to use those funds. So that's the only transfer I have tonight.
Does anyone have any questions on these recommended transfers?
I just have one question. Is it one teacher and one power that this is funding?
No, it's actually a part of a teacher's salary, and I think there's six or seven powers.
Okay, that makes sense. I thought maybe you had the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
If not, you're going to become a power.
Yeah, exactly. That's where it's at.
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Angela.
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It's a vote. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the expenditure report. Mr. Suter?
So you should all have that in your packet. And again, if you, if you notice, the only thing we've changed on this report is now that we have a supervisor of buildings and grounds, it made sense to pull out those line items within each school or each cost center that relate to facilities and grounds and put them in their own, its own cost center. So that's what we've done. If you look at the last two pages of the report, you'll see all the accounts that relate to running the district, the facilities and so forth. So it's obviously the salary of the buildings and ground supervisor, but the custodial costs, the utility costs, the maintenance of the buildings, and so forth. So we've taken all those accounts and put them in their own cost center, so that way Mr. Carlstad can manage those accounts and move money around as he needs to, to get work done at the various schools. So if you go back and look at the school cost centers, you'll see that now the principals should have an easier time managing their budget. They don't have to look at these utilities and custodial lines that really just kind of blur their vision of what they really need to manage. So being the first month of the fiscal year, there's really not too much to report. Everything, you know, except for what I'm going to tell you in a second, everything's pretty straightforward. So rather than go through this report, I'd like to go over just briefly the, I believe I sent everybody the memo that I gave to the fiscal overseer over the weekend. So I just, I just want to kind of walk you through that. So some of the transfers that the superintendent approved up to this date were district, well, we transferred some funds into the district school committee clerical salary account so that the administrative assistant can take minutes for the building needs committee, so we needed to fund that. We transferred some funds to cover the salary of the tech integration specialist, which was approved by the committee. You should note that we only had one bidder for the district transportation contract, that was AA Transportation. They were the provider for the last three years, but that cost went up 11%. So we transferred $60,000 into that account to cover the additional cost of the transportation, and we were able to do that within that, its own district-wide cost center. The district security upgrades that the superintendent talked about, when we originally bid that out, we had intended to run all the cabling for the high school up above the ceiling, but since we awarded that contract and we've had some asbestos work done, we were advised by the state that we should not run any cabling above the ceiling. were advised by the state that we should not run any cabling above the ceiling tiles since they're asbestos-containing material. So we had to go back and reprice the contract and run all the cabling through a conduit just below the ceiling, so that added $15,000 to the cost of that job, and we were able to transfer that from some lines within that district-wide cost center. Each of the building principals and pupil services had requested some additional time for their clerical staff to come in over the summer, work 40 hours, to be determined by the principal to fulfill whatever needed to be done over the summer, placing orders, putting orders away, those sorts of things. So each, each building, each cost center, we transferred $800. We took it from teacher, teacher supplies and materials. Later on, we'll talk about the East Brookfield custodial salaries and the transfer and the cost of combining those two part-time custodial, custodial positions into a full-time position. The asbestos project at the high school, there were some issues and change orders that had to be awarded in that project. Initially, when we bid the project, the contractor carried a contingency for electrical work at $62,000. We had to rebid the electrical work, cause no one, no one bid on it originally, when the bids came in, they were closer to 100, so we needed an additional $30,000 in that account. And there were also a few small changes for smoke alarms that were outdated and need to be replaced, so that project needed to be updated to complete it. So some of the, those are the transfers that we were able to cover, and the superintendent approved them because they were all within the different cost centers. But what you need to, what you need to be aware of going forward is, we've talked about active and retiree health insurance costs, when we got our updates this year, we were notified by Fallon that insurance costs for active employees was, to go up 19%, and insurance costs for early retirees was gonna go up 65%. So that placed a heavy burden financially on the district. We're working to make some changes to the plan to mitigate the increase, but based upon what we know now and the changes we plan to make, we still think that we're gonna need $177,000 in the, those two accounts, the retirees account and the active employees health insurance account, to meet the obligations for the rest of the fiscal year. Special education transportation, because the regular transportation contract went up about 11%, we're anticipating some increases in that as well, but until we know what our transportation needs are for special ed, it would be premature to do a transfer at this point, so we're gonna wait and see what, what happens as the, as the, as school begins. And then the two bigger, biggest areas that we're concerned about right now are private school tuitions within the pupil service, pupil services cost center. We've had a student or two move into the district who require special services and need to be placed in special facilities. We're analyzing that right now, but we anticipate that the private tuition school, the private school tuition line could be as, as much as $130,000 short of what's in there now. And then the collaborative tuition accounts for, for students that we place, you know, outside of the district for special services, the collaborative tuition went up, and I believe we also have some additional students with needs that we're gonna be sending to the collaborative that weren't budgeted when we did the fiscal '17 budget last year. So right now, we're estimating that that line is about $235,000 short of what we had anticipated at the time. So kinda the, the unknown right now is about a half a million dollars that we're gonna probably need, but we're gonna, we're gonna wait and see what shakes out with the pupil services. Those aren't definite yet, and see what happens, and we'll try to deal with that in the fall, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to find a half a million dollars in the budget to cover those accounts. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Does anyone have any questions? Heather?
I'm just curious, how does the state determine how much money we get in circuit breaker funds?
It's, it's based on a reimbursement rate of what we pay out for certain pieces of what we pay out, not everything, but I was talking with pupil services, and we may be able to apply for some extenuating reimbursements because of the cost of some of this, so they're looking into that. The problem with that is I don't think they file that until next spring, and we don't get the reimbursements until the following fiscal year. So what we receive in reimbursement this year is for what we paid out last year, so we're always a year behind. So I don't see where we'll see any benefit to the, you know, what we're paying out, we're not gonna see any reimbursement in the current year for the additional costs that we're incurring, so.
Would the state allow, or the fiscal overseer allow to use money from the stabilization account to pay for any of this?
Yeah, orig, when I talked to them about this, when I talked to Mark Abrahams about this, he suggested that once we get E and D certified, you know, if these things all come to fruition, that we may be able to get the state to allow us to use some E and D. They had originally thought last year that they didn't want us to let E and D go below a half a million dollars, but, you know, this is kind of extenuating circumstances and there's really no need, I mean, there's no way to carve a half a million dollars out of the budget at this point, so we may be, may be able to look at that, and they're okay with us not doing any transfers until we get E and D certified and we see what happens with all these accounts and what actually shakes out, so.
I also had questions about transportation. 11% seems like a pretty big increase. When do we usually go out for, to bid with different companies? Is that something we should be looking at next budget season, or?
Well, the bid, the bid that we just awarded was for three years, so we're good for three more years, so I don't know when they went out before. We did go out late, and we only had one, they were the only bidder, so there was no competition to lower the cost. So it's an 11% increase, just over 11% between what we paid last year and the new year, and then it's about a 3.5% increase over the three years of the contract, so.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I had a question on clerical salaries for summer.
Mm-hmm.
I know that was a concern of mine this year when I found out that the secretaries weren't going to be allowed to work as much as they had in the past. Unless I was given misinformation, I understood that there was no money in the budget for that, for this year.
Right.
And I think it's important, I feel, in the future that there's money placed in the budget for our secretaries in the schools to work in the summer. Having been a secretary, I know what goes on in a school in the summer, and there's lots of work to be done, and I also know our secretaries are so diligent and dedicated that they're probably doing a lot of work on their own time, and I don't think that's, that's fair to them. So I'm hoping that in next year's budget, we do make an allowance for that.
Yeah, I think that, that was the point that was brought forth by all the principals, that there's a definite need to have them, you know, five days or so at the end of the school year, five days at the beginning, and maybe some additional time, but, yeah, we'll act, we'll look at that when we put the budget together.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? No vote is needed on any of that, the expenditure report?
No, it's just all good information.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The next, oh, we do have one more thing that we need to vote on, of, which Mr. Suter will explain, it's a vote to reauthorize the deficit loans.
Right.
Did you explain that?
So everybody's aware that in 2014, we borrowed a million, just over a million dollars to cover the deficit, the operating deficit for the district. So every year, we pay down a certain amount and we reissue the notes for another year. When we, when we paid down the amount in December, we reissued the notes for a shorter period of time, and at the time, the committee had thought that they would be able to pay off that note in its entirety, it's due at the end of this month. But in light of the situation that we're in, there's no way we're gonna pay that debt off right now. So we're able to go out to bid, we don't have, it's not as involved as it used to be because the amount of the loan is decreasing, and the tax code doesn't require us to issue a full disclosure to the borrowers and get a legal opinion. But we do need to determine how much the committee would like to pay off or pay down on this note when we, when we roll it over. So we had budgeted to pay $220,000 on the debt when we did the budget last year. The outstanding balance right now is $813,000. But my thought was, in light of the information I just gave the committee, we may wanna pay a lesser amount on that debt and use some of the extra money that we're saving and put it towards the health insurance or the special education costs at this point, and I don't think there's any downside to that. But I think the lowest amount we could pay would be $150,000, which would leave us $70,000 to put towards the other problems in the budget, so.
Have you talked about this with the financial overseer?
I did, and he believes that's a prudent idea at this point, so I guess, I guess I would look for a, a motion, if, you know, for an amount that the committee wishes to pay down on this debt.
So the amount you're recommending is?
I would recommend $150,000.
Which is the minimum?
Yeah, yep. So that would leave $70,000 in the line, and right now, we could transfer that to cover the, well, there's plenty of places to transfer it with the problems we have, so.
Does everyone understand that? Would anyone like to make a motion on Mr. Suter's recommendation?
I move that we adjust, what, how, how do you want that writ? How do you want that writ?
Yeah, we pay down $120,000 on the deficit loan.
Okay, that, what he said. So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Do you wanna roll call on this vote?
I don't think so.
Not necessary? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
It's a vote, thank you.
You are correct, it should be 150.
That's what I wrote, and then I changed.
You threw me under a bus there?
It's 220 that we have in the budget. Right, good call.
Thanks, Missy.
Gonna amend the motion?
Yes, could we amend that motion, please?
Yeah, friendly amendment, so change it to 150.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda are the subcommittee reports. We have, Mr. St. Peter will report on negotiation, subcommittee, and policy subcommittee. Mr. St. Peter?
All right, first off, on the negotiations, we've been diligently working on some progress with the Union D situation with custodial contracts. That's still in the works. We're looking at probably meeting with them again sometime before the end of the month. That's the latest update we have on that. I would like to try to have an executive session to kinda inform the board on what's going on. If we could make that happen, that would be.
At the September meeting?
Correct. That way we can inform everybody and get them involved and let them know what's going on.
We're also gonna be talking at the end of the meeting about holding a special meeting, so we could have it then too, but we'll talk about that when we get to that item.
All right. That's basically what's been going on with the negotiations, there has been a lot, I mean, you can ask Angela, and there are, there's a lot of negotiations going on right now with it, so.
Okay, and the policy subcommittee?
Policy subcommittees, the facility use policy, you guys have a copy of that in front of you right now, we're looking to amend it. We'd like to make updates on section four, where it says for the 1 million and 3 million, we'd like to change that to 1 million, 2 million. And then on the very end, we add number 36, where it'll be a liability waiver may be obtained for any group, club, or organization wishing to congregate in the parking lot or athletic field before or after a function or charity. We'd like to bring that.
Motion to approve. Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Jason. All those in favor?
I just have a question.
Yes.
The last meeting, we had asked Mr. Suter to look into the insurance agent that we were.
Yes, you were gonna check on waivers as well.
Right, he's, they are putting together a written response to that, I don't have it yet, but he said he would provide us with something on whether waivers would be appropriate or not, so.
This would be, we, I'm wondering if we have to vote twice on this, is, would this kind of a change? Do you think it needs a second reading? I, I know we've had to vote twice on new policies, or some that are changing dramatically, but this one just has some minor changes, so.
It's a revision.
It's a revision, so I don't think we would have to vote on it twice.
No, it's just an update.
Would you be more comfortable tabling it, or?
I just wanna make sure we have all the information, that's my whole.
Did you get the impression, Gary, that there'd be any problems on the waiver section?
He didn't really tell me. He just said that he was gonna look at our policies and put something together. There may be some additional coverage that we can purchase to cover volunteers and that sort of thing, if we use volunteers or if we have waivers for people that use the property.
Maybe we should hold off on this until the September meeting or the special meeting, and we can get this settled then. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, so I think that the motion would just be dead if we're not gonna move on it. Are you okay with that, Heather?
Yeah, I just want, like I said, I wanna make sure we have all the information, I wanna hear from the insurance agent, just to be sure.
Okay.
I'm okay with reducing it, but I wanna make sure we have, on our homework.
Okay, well hopefully, we can get this done at our special meeting at the end of August, we have to find a date for that. Okay, Mr. St. Peter, all the other ones, that they kinda go along with that policy?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll hold off on all of those? Okay, the next item is new business, and we have a personnel report. Does anyone have any questions on personnel? I would just like to introduce. Introduce. Oh, okay, Dr. Crowe is gonna make an introduction of our new assistant principal at the high school.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Nate Malone, who's the new assistant principal at Proudie High School.
Everyone, very happy to be here, very excited for a really exciting school year coming up, and I look forward to meeting and working with each of you as time goes on.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, we have a lunch price increase recommendation by Robin Sunquist, the director of food services. Hi, Robin.
Back in June, when I had my state review, they suggested that we increase the price of lunch at Proudie. If we increase the price of lunch at Proudie to $3, we don't need to increase the price for pre-K through 8 right now. So I think that's a better idea, just to go with that. Goes on the paid lunch equity calculations that they give us, so. I think I, I didn't know if I needed approval, but it's a state thing and they, they kinda make me do it, so.
So this would be an increase for grades?
Nine through 12.
What?
Just at the high school.
Oh, okay.
Nine through 12, it will be $3.
And what is it currently?
It's 275.
Okay, so.
Across the board.
Okay.
So this'll make it $3 up there.
And it would stay the same at all other grade levels?
Yeah. I think, I think it's easier to do that than it is to change, you know, 275 is a lot for K through 8, I think.
Does anyone have any questions of, yes, Wendy?
Does a notice get sent home prior to school starting, that this will be?
It goes in the paper. It's in the paper, it's the way we've always done it.
And you really?
But the, the whole, it's a pretty big article, that we're going with the national school lunch program, what the free and reduced costs are, what the, what the salary limits are and stuff like that, so.
I just, no, I don't get the paper, so I would never see it as a parent.
Or maybe we can do an all-call or something. It's just for Proudie.
Right.
We can do an all-call.
Does, is, is there gonna be a newsletter sent from the high school this summer, are you expecting? Maybe you could include it in that as well?
Put it in that.
Great minds think alike. Thank you. Okay, do we have a recommendation to increase the high school lunch price from 270?
I have one question, I'm sorry. Is the cost of milk also increasing?
No.
No.
Just the cost of lunch.
Are the portions at the high school bigger?
Yes.
They are? Okay.
And they get, they get a lot, well, I kinda made a deal with some of the kids up there, because they want more nuggets and they want more, more this and more that, so it was like, you can have a cookie or you can have more nuggets, so. We kinda gave them what they wanted, so, but they do get more. They get more rice, more chicken, more, you know, they get a bigger portion, and they have a lot more options.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to increase the high school lunch price from 275 to $3?
So moved.
Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, thank you. Okay, the next item is a cafeteria substitute rate change request by Mrs. Sunquist.
Right now, our subs get 8.
Right now, our subs get eight fifty an hour. So the few subs that we have, we use them constantly, and these two particular girls are fantastic. The thing is, is that a lot of people, you know, they say, geez, I can work at Comby's for ten, eleven dollars an hour, so they leave. They don't stay working in the cafeteria, it's hard work.
What are they making now?
Eight fifty an hour. So it's okay for the brand-new people walking in to make eight fifty an hour, I don't see anything wrong with that. But once they're experienced, and they've been with us for a while, I think it's worth us paying them a little bit more, so we have subs. You know, we've had to... Y Village especially, we've had to go pay for some days because we don't have a sub, you know, so I think... I mean, I could call Katie even and give her the names of the people. You know, once they're experienced, I think they should get a bump.
I would think you're going to have to have like a scale of some kind.
There should be.
Otherwise, there'd be, you know, there could be arguments.
Yeah.
Oh, I worked that long too, right?
So new people, eight fifty, you know, I mean, somebody could sub for the kitchen for a year and only work twice.
Right.
So it depends, you know, most of the kitchens try to work without a sub if they can get away with it. But we really want to keep these two subs that we have, because they're really, really, really good.
Okay, we have time, so maybe you could come back to the September meeting with like a recommendation for like how many years you go... Would that be okay?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is graduate two thousand and seventeen. I'll give you a little introduction to this. We had a parent, actually, who contacted me, and I believe she contacted Dr. Crowe as well, about her concerns. This particular person has twins, she probably is going to speak to us, I think she's here tonight. She has twins, one who attends David Proudy High School, and one who attends Bay Path. And graduation in two thousand and seventeen, which was also in two thousand and sixteen, is going to be on the same evening. She asked whether or not the committee could consider, and I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not even sure who makes that final determination, but I thought it's something we could just discuss tonight. I know, I feel that the example I gave, if it were Leicester, or North Brookfield, or another school district, that it happened to be the same night, that would be a different story. But because it's Bay Path, and because we're a member of that collaborative, to me, that's a different situation, and I don't believe that it affects only Mrs. Wheeler, who will be speaking tonight, but probably many others, who have, you know, kids graduating from both of those schools. So Mrs. Wheeler, if you'd like to come up and... I guess I pretty much said what you're going to say, but... It's my understanding that Bay Path already has established, that's why we are kind of hoping that maybe we could consider changing hours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me some time. My sons are going to be seniors in twenty short days, and one of them is a student at Bay Path, and one of them is a student at Proudy. I'm being confronted with having to make a choice of where to go, and I can't do that. I'm a single parent. I'm who my boys have known and been there for them, and I would be forever grateful if you would consider, or whoever's making the decision, would consider making something... The date just dates different, so that I'd have the opportunity to see both of my sons graduate. I can't imagine that I'm the only person within our district that this might affect. It could be a grandparent who'd like to see two grandchildren in the two different schools, but then they are confronted with the same problem, that they have to make a choice. And I'd like to think, as Mrs. Bertham pointed out, that we are part of the collaborative, and that it wouldn't conflict like it does. So thank you very much for listening, and please consider.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to ask Dr. Crowe, who would actually would make this determination, and do you see any problem this year with us making this change?
The only thing, I know that Bay Path has established this, so we would be the ones having to change, and the committee establishes the school calendar, so I would think the committee would be the governing board to decide that.
Now, this year, we had graduation, was it on Thursday night or Friday night?
It was on Friday night.
It was Friday.
Right, and that's going to be when it's scheduled for seventeen as well? Because I believe in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, but it used to always be on Thursday night, right?
I don't know. I know it's Friday.
I personally, I don't... I obviously want to hear how you all feel, but I would not have any objection to bringing it back to Thursday night. I know I had a discussion with Dr. Crowe, she thought even the possibility of a Saturday morning, I don't know how anybody feels about that. I tend to think that probably a Thursday night would be better.
Yeah.
And does anyone else have any comment that they would like to make?
I see no problem in changing it at all.
I think, again, it's a nice gesture, I can't even imagine being in that kind of a situation, or how you would make that choice.
I have a...
And I understand we can't make a change for one family, but I really do believe that it probably affects more than just one family.
I agree.
Well, I think, like you said, because we're members of... Spencer's a member of Bay Path, so I think that it's right for us to do that. I would just ask, could maybe... Mr. James, could you maybe comment on how the teachers wouldn't care, would they?
Absolutely not. I think if we should probably test to back, if we put the vote in the senior class, we would have people here for graduation to accommodate Josh and Rose.
Thank you, Mr. James. Okay, with that being said, do we have the... Oh, I'm sorry, Alicia.
In a test of what both Ms. Wheeler and Mr. James said, I completely agree. As a member of the senior class, I know even last year, I'm on student council as well, and I had conflicts between working at Proudy's graduation, going to a friend's graduation who goes to another school. We actually conflicted with a lot last year, and a lot of people had problems, so I think this would definitely help a lot of people.
Thank you, Alicia. I'm thinking that possibly it got changed when they had it for those couple of years at Mechanics Hall, because it really was on Thursday night that I remember. Heather?
We don't have anything pre-ordered, like set, just for that specific date that would interfere with?
Dr. Yoke, no.
And do you think maybe we should survey the senior class, just to make sure we're doing the right thing, get opinions from them?
I don't think so. I think that since we have... Since we set the calendar, that we should just move forward, that's my feeling. Does everybody else agree?
I think the senior class would be happy to move it up a day, I would think. Want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
I know.
Madam Chair, just a comment, I mean, I'm sure, to Alicia's point, I'm sure there are many, many Proudy students that have friends at Bay Path that want to attend their friend's
Right.
graduation, so I mean, I'd make this in the form of a motion to change to the... Change the date to the Thursday.
Do we have those dates right here? I don't... Does anyone have the calendar?
That's what I was looking...
Yeah, I just had it out.
Did you know what the date was, Mrs. Wheeler? June third? Okay, so...
That's a Saturday.
That's a Saturday.
So we would be changing graduation to Thursday, June first. Do I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Wendy?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Jason has a request for a volunteer day. Jason, do you want to explain that to us?
Sure. At the Capitol meeting, we took a walk around, and my biggest concern at that meeting was the football field, the middle field. I know there's been some concern throughout the citizens as well, and when I went up there, it was, you know, it really bothered me, the condition that it was in. So I understand that the custodians are pretty busy doing their thing, and they are a little shorthanded, so I'd like to do a volunteer day in August, especially before the season gets going for football. I'd bring up my equipment from my business. I have a tractor with a brush hog attachment, so we can get that all cleared out. I got a bucket truck, I know there were some trees he was concerned about, and I can get those also cleaned out. There's also a memorial at the end of the football field, that you can't even see anymore. There's arborvitae, I know the terms, he thought they were pine trees. Sorry, Russ. There's some overgrown arborvitae, and you can't even see the memorial anymore, so I thought it'd be nice to throw on the backhoe attachment and dig those up, transplant them, you know, keep them on the property, but so people can see the actual memorial. I think that would be a nice gesture, make a nice bed around it. I also brought up the home side fence is just hideous looking. I don't know if anybody's been up there, but it's bent, it's disgusting. So I mentioned, why do we even need a fence? If we can take that down, and maybe in a later date, if we can budget it to put up a new one, would be nice, but I'm not even sure if we need it, to be honest with you. Just pulling that out would make that... Clean that whole place up in an instant. And then also the bleachers, we have some trees growing up through the bleachers, so if people do volunteer, bring your little kids that can crawl underneath there.
You are looking for volunteers?
Yes, we are. I am going to be looking for volunteers, because I am one man, but I can do a lot, and I can point people in the right directions on what needs to be done. We have to prioritize, and I think our priorities have to start with that football field, and show other teams that come to play us that we have some pride. And then work our way down, you know, and even hit around the baseball field, get that all cleaned up, come down the side of the hill there, and just clean it up again, you know, make it look... Make it look nice, because as... From a landscaper's eye, it just drives me nuts.
Now, would you be working in coordination with Russ Karlstedt? Would he give you direction on things he'd like to see done?
I talked to Russ, he said, go for it.
Okay.
Because really, in... If you think about it, it's helping them out a lot, too.
Right.
So he says, do what you got to do, and obviously, we can have some volunteers up there, and it'd be a bring-your-own-rake type thing, because brush hogging, I don't have... It's not a bagger on that, so there will be debris, we can rake that up, if you have whips, gas-powered whips. I got plenty of them, but we need them also to make money for our business, so I don't like handing too much of our equipment out.
Well, first of all, I think it's great that you are offering your equipment and your time, that's very commendable. Alicia? Alicia?
I was just wondering if this could be something that was... Could be open to students, especially since...
Absolutely.
Okay, because that would be a perfect way to get our community service hours for graduation, and instill some pride.
Yep, absolutely.
Jason, do you have a date in mind?
Well, here's the thing, I'm looking at... I talked to my boss, which is my wife. August twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-seventh, or twenty-eighth, those are all weekends. It's going to be too tough during the week. I work too late, so by the time I get out, get the tractor over there, I won't get a whole lot done.
Well, I think you should be the one to set the date, and...
Yeah, well, I wanted to talk about it with the committee, because if you guys are interested in also helping out, what dates would be good for you as well? So I know Mike had some interest in it, as well as Jim, so whatever dates really work good for everybody, but those are... Those are basically the last two weekends in August. This weekend, I can't, so it'd have to be the next... The following two, so.
I actually, this is kind of embarrassing, I have to ask Mrs. Messier a question, because my wife's not here tonight. When is my daughter's birthday party? One of those days. I know you have an... You've got an invitation.
I believe it's the twenty-seventh, Mr. Ethia.
Thank you. I'm not embarrassed, I just... So I can't do the... I can't do the twenty-seventh, I wasn't invited to the party.
Can't do the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Saturday, August twentieth?
I'm away.
Is there ice cream cake?
Oh, yeah.
I might come to... Alright, so the August twentieth, I mean, that's fine, that's a Saturday. I believe the twentieth is a Saturday.
Oh, but that's okay.
What's that?
I said I won't be able to go, I'm in Quebec that weekend, but...
Okay.
But that...
Bonjour.
But I'm sure Mike can do a lot more work than I can up there, so I'd be happy to help anyway, I could, but...
Well, I got, you know, I think that was kind of the day I was leaning toward, was the twentieth.
That'll give us some time.
It's a sad day, get up there nice and early, and just get going.
What time would you start?
Well, I'm an early riser, so.
Yeah.
Probably don't want to know what time I'd start, but...
Alright, could we get this out to... Just trying to think of the best way to get the word out to everyone.
Well, that comes... Kind of comes with the next...
Item on the agenda.
Agenda.
Right, very good.
So I guess we'll go with that date, is that good? August twentieth, you guys can spread the word? Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, come on up. As long as they know I'm the boss, I'm in charge.
I don't think we need a vote for this.
No, I don't believe so.
No.
Through the chair, Mr. Manette, six AM, seven AM, I mean, what...
If you want high school kids...
If we want kids there, I think seven.
Seven, yeah. I'm just thinking...
I mean, really, if you want kids there, maybe ten, but it's way too late.
I'm just thinking, maybe it's going to be odd. We could start early, I mean, they don't have to...
I say we start at seven, we can get some coolers up there.
Rain or shine?
We got an ice machine.
Rain or shine?
Yeah, I would say.
I work in the rain.
Okay.
This is a teachable moment.
Okay, well, again, I think that's a great idea, and thank you, Mr. Manette. The next item on the agenda is... Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, you know, I didn't even take a walk up there yet, but I'm going to fly with that brush hog, so if I have, you know, I'd like to get around that football field done, because, well, when I was in high school anyway, the soccer field used the football field as well, so I feel like that's our main focus right now. But I'm going to move right along, we'll get the whipping done around the fence line, and then I can bring the tractor right up top, and brush hog anything that needs to be done up there, so.
Thank you. Okay, the next item will answer the last question I had. We have, Mr. Ethia is going to present a request for the school committee to have a Facebook page. Mr. Ethia?
Yeah, I did a little research, and I'm thinking, you know, social media, just to get information out there. I mean, I know a lot of people now, we talked about it earlier, how people don't get the newspaper anymore, and a lot of people get their information that way, so I was thinking, as a school committee, I've seen some other committees doing it, just setting up accounts with Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, because I know, you know, the kids use all of them. And, you know, we'll get this... Get this information on the volunteer day out, but I just wanted to get anyone... Anyone else's feelings on this, you know?
I think it's a great idea. Because, again, the volunteer day, we post it.
Yeah, I mean, we share the YouTube...
Yep.
For tonight, you know? Share the... Share those accounts, we'll...
Now, would you be the administrator of this? Would you be... Would we send information to you, or would it be something that we would all have access to?
I would think there should be at least... I mean, I'd volunteer to do it, but I think there should be at least two of us that could be administrators, maybe more, that way, you know, doesn't... You know, not everyone's going to get to everything, but I mean, just about everyone's got a smartphone now, you can take a little video, or, you know, or if you're at a play, or whatever, or a concert, and...
One thing that you had said to me is that there's a way of doing it, that you wouldn't have comments, a comment section. One thing that you had said to me is that there's a way of doing it that you wouldn't have comments, a comment section.
Yeah, I-
I do have a fear that you could get a lot of comments.
I did that research and, yeah, there's, you can have like, I think they call it read-only, is where only the, only the administrators can, can publish on the page.
Right, because I don't think it should be a comment, the type of a page people would go to.
Yeah, no, it's information-only really. You know, and we have the forum here when someone has questions. They can come down and ask us at the beginning and the end, so.
Would anyone else be entrusted in serving as an administrator with Mr. Wendy?
How many administrators can you have on there, Mike, do you know?
You know what, that's something I'm not positive, but I mean, if we, I mean-
I mean, if you could put all seven, that'd be awesome.
It would, that way we could get things out there.
I think we just have to make sure we're not talking to each other, having a quorum on the Facebook page.
I was going to say, I actually think it's a bad idea if we all have access to it. We need a point person and then a backup person. Because we should only have one person that's designated to collect the information and put it on, because we don't ever want it to sound like a conversation or a back-and-forth or- So, I think that, that would be helpful, to have like a point person that's like, this is the collector of information, but the backup person, in case there are vacation or something comes up, is, it also has access. And we're not rushing to try to call wives to get email, passwords and things like that.
I think that's, I agree.
That makes sense.
I don't, would this need a vote? I don't believe so, it's-
Yeah, I don't think so. I just, if, feeling of the board and I'll get that set up and-
Okay. Is everyone in favor of doing this? Anybody have any comments?
I just think we have to be very careful of what we're posting to make sure it's informational only. And I almost feel like the post should go through the chair, the-
Yeah, you could send it to me before you post it. And make it an informational-only. And maybe we could do a vote tonight, just to say that we, we are going to start, initiate a, a school committee Facebook page to be used for informational purposes only. Would someone like to make a vote, a motion to that?
Before, I'll make the motion, but just, just maybe amend it. I mean, should we have the wording in there that we add a Twitter account and an Instagram account? Just, I know, I mean, I feel, my, I know my nephews use Twitter more than Facebook in their high school age.
Mine use Instagram more, so. My sister won't let my, her kids use Facebook, they only can use Instagram, so.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll make them, Mrs. Messier has got another comment.
Sorry, I'm so cautious all the time, I apologize. But I almost feel like we should look into other districts to see if other school committees have policies for Facebook pages before we jump the gun. I'm just, just a thought.
Do you probably check with MAS C?
Okay, I'll make a phone call tomorrow and then I'll get the information back.
Okay, so we won't do any vote tonight. And we can, if we find we need to vote on it as a policy, we can bring it back to the next meeting. Dr. Crowe suggested MAS C. Could give us some advice?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a phone call tomorrow and we'll-
Madam Chair, could you have that at the emergency meeting?
We could, yeah.
And we'll, we'll just get the information out for the Volunteer Day the old-fashioned way.
Right. So, everyone, spread the word on the Volunteer Day. It will be on August 20th. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we have some fundraiser requests. The first one is from Knox Trail, or I guess they're all from Knox Trail. Is anyone here to present those?
Good evening, everyone. My name's John Thoma, I'm the Assistant Principal of Knox Trail Middle School. And I am here tonight seeking the board, the board's approval on three separate types of fundraisers. The first one listed is our annual magazine drive, which is scheduled to kick off on September 30th. It's a two-week fundraiser, and the students really, really enjoy it. It's kicked off with an assembly, there's a lot of buzz about it. The kids get prizes every day as they continue to sell things. It's a wonderful school spirit type of event that we have. And generally, it's raised somewhere between $9,000 to $11,000. And that money is used to offset costs for our field trips and assemblies. I don't know if you want me to rip through the next two, or you guys want to discuss that?
Explain all of them to us.
Okay. The second one listed is dances. We have about four to five dances that we sponsor throughout the year through different organizations so that they can raise funds. Our first back-to-school dance would be scheduled for September 23rd, and that would be run by our peer leader group. Those dances are definitely well-represented by our students. And it's a, another really good community thing where the students get to come in and enjoy themselves. And we have the younger kids, the fifth and sixth graders, come in for the first hour and a half, and then they get picked up by their parents and guardians. And then the older kids do the next hour and a half. And then lastly, is our garden club fundraiser at the Spencer Local Fest. The woman who runs our garden club, her name is Amelia Rittner. She runs this bi-local celebration. It's happening on the 20th of August, and it's at Clem's. She has a space available for our garden club, which if you have an opportunity, please stop by Knox Trail. It looks absolutely gorgeous. There's tons of tomatoes and peppers and kale and, and really nice things. They want to be able to set up a table there and sell some lemonade and sell some of their produce that they've harvested in return for some donations, which they would put back into, into their kitty to buy soil and seeds and fertilizer and things for the, the next coming year.
Thank you.
And any questions for any of those fundraisers?
Anyone have any questions on these?
I have one question. I'm taking Heather's point of view on this one. They're all awesome, and I've seen the garden, it's incredible. Is there an insurance problem with selling food that is, even though it's not prepared, but it's grown, it could be contaminated? Is there a problem with that? I know that there are, that is a problem for farms. That's why like cheese isn't sold in Massachusetts. It's very, it's very rare, because it's very expensive to insure. So, I don't know. If, I think it should be a donation without a set price, because that gets around the selling food for, of cost. I think that we need to be careful.
Sales or anything?
I don't think they're allowed to anymore with our, our wellness policy. So-
Never would have thought of that.
Think we need to change the wellness policy.
Because it's the same thing, it's the same thing. It's sad, but true, you know, you poison one kid and then, you know, everyone gets mad. I'm just asking, I'm just, I'm just asking, it's my insurance brain, you know how I think. So, I think that we need to just be, warn them to be careful that it's not, your tomato is a dollar. It's, we appreciate dollar donations for this tomato. I, we can't take, take any questions really, but go ahead.
I'm happy to express that to Amelia in respect to just accepting donations for the-
And then when I don't know, I didn't see, because I'm going to be in Quebec that weekend.
I thought, I thought you did say it was just donations.
It is donations. I don't believe they're putting a, a set price to any of these things, you know.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? If not, do we, I have a motion to approve these three fundraising requests for Knox Trail.
So moved.
Motion by Angela.
Second.
Second and by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you kindly.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is superintendent evaluation. Heather, did you ask for this to be on the agenda or?
Yes, I did. So, we're having our first meeting tomorrow. Angela, I believe you're attending. Wendy, not sure. Okay. So, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee consists of Mrs. Napton, Ms. Pellchat, and myself. And I would ask school committee members to begin to familiarize yourself with the standards and indicators on the rubric for the superintendent eval and be think, be thinking about the superintendent's strength and areas for improvement to provide feedback to the subcommittee.
Does anyone have any questions of Heather? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item I asked to have put on here, really more for discussion about exit interviews. To be honest with you, I was kind of hoping that school committee, one, at least one school committee member could be part of this. But in checking with legal counsel and in rechecking with MAS C, I was informed that because it's a personnel issue, that a school committee member cannot be part of an exit interview or if it's a written one, not even to be able to read it. So, with that being said, it kind of defeated the purpose of, you know, of, of having this. I don't know how the rest of the members feel, if it's something you want the policy subcommittee to look at, or if Dr. Crowe has any comments about the current method that we use for exit interviews.
I do.
Thank you.
What I can tell you, Madam Chair, is that each of the principals is aware that when someone leaves in their building, they reach out to that person and ask for conversation. I have done the same, but there is no obligation on the part of the person. Somebody had recommended to me, can you hold the last paycheck and make it be a face-to-face exchange of the last paycheck? That's technically not legal. Once they've earned the money, they're entitled to the money. And if they normally get it electronically. We would like to get feedback on that, but the, the person does not have any obligation to do that interview with us.
Is this something that the policy subcommittee wants to look at? Or are we happy with keeping it as-is, or?
I think it's worth looking into, absolutely.
Maybe the policy subcommittee could check with other school districts in the area?
Sure.
Get an idea of what other school districts are doing?
Yep.
Thank you. So, no action will be taken tonight, but it is something that the policy subcommittee will take a look at. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we have a request made by Mr. James.
Good evening. Jay, you can put me down as a volunteer. I'll have to check with my boss for final approval, but, and I got some brush-cutting instruments too. And I'll get the word out to the faculty to see if anybody wants to join me in a, a day in the sun and exercise before school starts. Good evening. Have you all copies of the request letter that I sent, I believe, on August 1st? If not, I do have some extra copies here.
Does everyone have a copy?
I'll tell you a printed one if you have one.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do is, you know, now that you've read, you know, the scope of the association's request, I'd like to right now just preface my request first, if I may, and then maybe answer any kind of clarification questions, and then let the school committee deliberate when and where they would like to. Is that okay with you, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great. At virtually every school committee meeting, the Personnel Enrollment Report is distributed. Taken individually, the numbers in the report seem inconsequential. But put them together, and they paint a more alarming picture of the health of the school district. For the past year and a half, students, teachers, and administrators are choosing to leave the district. When I started teaching here 35 years ago, there were nearly 800 students at Proudy High School. This year, we'll have about half as many. The high school has had nine administrators in less than two years. For the first time in my memory, teachers have resigned mid-year for positions with other school districts. People who are hired don't stay long. The district's stability depends on an educational program for the student from kindergarten through grade 12. Its stability and effectiveness depends on a workforce that has built longer-lasting relationships with district parents, students, and community members. The exodus of students, teachers, and administration threatens that stability. It should be a paramount concern to the school committee to find out why this exodus is occurring, so a plan to retain students, administrators, and teachers can be developed. The school committee is very well-equipped to conduct such an investigation. Taking general polls and surveys only lead to vague and general answers. This is a small district. It's not a multinational corporation. Interview the parents, the teachers and the administrators who have departed, and ask them why they have left. Only then will the district be able to make a plan to stop the hemorrhaging of the district's most precious resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone have any questions of Mike or any comments? I'd like to say a few things. I received this request from Mr. James last week when I was on vacation. And to be honest with you, I've been, haven't thought about much else since then, trying to decide what the best way is to respond to your request. I think anybody who knows me, hopefully all of the teachers, all of the staff in the district knows I have the utmost respect for all of you and the job that you do every day. With that being said, the first thing I did when I received Mr. James's request was I asked him for clarification. I wanted to be sure I understood exactly what he was looking for. He made it very clear to me that he was not making a complaint against anyone or more than one person. He wanted a, a general investigation done. The other thing I think people know, who know me, have watched me through my campaign, knows how I feel about investigations. I'm not a fan. I wasn't a fan of the last one, I probably shouldn't say that, but I wasn't. And it's not the way I want, I want to see the school committee working. I want to take a more proactive approach. I want to start working together. I can't say that enough how important it is. I don't think the school district is ever going to move forward until the Teachers Association and the administration, the school committee, we work together. And I think we could, you know, first thing, and you know this, Mr. James, that personnel is not something under the jurisdiction of the school committee. We have no control over, we have very little control, I should say. We have superintendent, we evaluate and hire assistant superintendent if we had one, and a few other positions. Otherwise, with ed reform, we lost all that control. We have no control over personnel issues. I think I said that to you, and you made the comment that these would be people that were already gone, so that possibly we could look into it. And I thought about that. And I thought, you know, we could talk to people, we could find out what, why they left, and we probably would find a lot of different reasons. Maybe some left for more money, maybe some left just because they had a better job, whatever. And maybe there'd be a lot who would say they weren't happy with things. Maybe they didn't like the way things are changing. But if we were to ask them, was your contract violated? Were your personal rights violated? They most likely wouldn't be able to say that they were. Because if they had been, I think these people would have filed some kind of a, a formal complaint or a grievance, and to my knowledge, that wasn't done. So, with that being said, what I want to do, and I'm hoping that you agree with me, is we have to find a way to change the way, the climate, change the relationship that's been existing. And we can only do that together. And my opinion is, is that if it were to be in the paper tomorrow morning, that the school, the school committee's going to do an investigation. If we're going to do a formal investigation, we certainly don't have the money to do it. And as I said, if we did it ourselves, I don't think we'd get a lot of answers that we could do anything about anyway. What we can do is make things better here for our kids and our staff. And I've had many, many conversations with Dr. Crowe about this. And I think we are on the same page. She wants it as much as I do. We've talked about a lot of things about what we can do to make things better. On next month's agenda, we're going to have an agenda item for a task force, which hopefully could be a group of people in the district that could work on problems before they get to a point where there are grievances or somebody leaves or whatever. As far as the students leaving, I do agree that that probably is something. I think years ago, we did do some kind of a survey to find out. And I don't think that there would be any problem with us continuing with that. And I think that might give us some useful information to find out why our students are leaving. And that's something I certainly would encourage us looking into. But my feeling, and I'll have to make sure that all my members agree, is that I have no desire at this point to do an investigation. I would rather work with you to move forward in a positive way.
In regards to Mr. James, like, this definitely is a big problem, even just looking at from the administrative leaving standpoint. It's definitely not right when, like, you hear students taking pulls in the hallway on, oh, I wonder how many administrators after this one is going to hand me my diploma. It definitely provides instability and an untrustable environment, because every student is afraid to get to no administrative positions, because they're afraid, oh, I'm going to blink my eye and they're going to leave. Even, we had an assembly one time, and we've had administrators say, oh, we're here to stay. And all people can do is laugh. That is a big problem.
We, I think we all agree that it's a big concern that we have. And again, as a committee, we're, we're kind of a new committee working together. Some of us have been here, you know, Mr. Manette and I are new. I think we, we're taking a little bit of a different approach, hopefully, a little bit more positive approach. Not to, and I'm, please don't take that as an insult to other members, because I think everybody who- because I think everybody who serves on a committee deserves recognition and thanks. But we have a different approach to things. And it's my sincere hope that we can have a much better working relationship with the unions. Again, I think it's the only way that this school district is going to move forward. Mr. James, I don't know if you want to?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I appreciate your sentiments. You know, if I just might respond, I don't want to go back and forth forever. That's, you know, not my intent here. You know, first and foremost, you know, I appreciate your concerns. You know, I was a former school committee person for six years in the Watchers District. I understand that, you know, there are certain lines in regard to, you know, the powers of the school committee are concerned in regard to personnel. But when you shake everything down, okay? This is a people business, and everything shakes down to personnel. Okay? Everything shakes down to, you know, the people who are running. Okay? So you can almost extend everything to a contract, you know, interpretation or dispute. You can whittle it down to, well, one person is having a contract dispute here, so I guess that's a personnel issue, you know? Everything can shuffle down into that area. Okay? You know, the second thing is, you know, I think if you don't look, you won't find the causes of your problems. Okay? I don't think it's anybody in this room, or anybody in general, knows that we're having an issue with retaining staff, administration, and students. That's a problem. That's a problem that needs to be looked at. Okay? And it needs to be identified what the causes are. If I just may make a, you know, give an example, like Jay Manette runs a very, very successful landscaping business. What would happen, or how would he respond if suddenly he was losing his customers, and they were leaving? And then he finds out that his workers are leaving. Right in the middle of the job, they drop their shovel and say, I'm going to work for someone else. Or, and then he finds out that his foreman, for his crews, are doing the same thing. They're leaving. I'm not going to try to anticipate what Jay would do, but, you know, if I were in that spot, I'm going to say, I'm going to try to stop people and say, why? I'm going to corner them. I'm going to talk to them. And I'm going to find out why, so I can address what's going on. That's what I'm asking for. Okay? Is for you to look at this. I think, okay, and the teachers think, that this is the paramount issue that's before the school committee. How are you going to stop this hemorrhaging? You've got to find out why it's hemorrhaging in the first place. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, and I guess the last thing I want to say is that I hope you'll give this new committee working together. I mean, we were, two of us were elected in May. We've only worked together as this group for a few months. We haven't even been through a school year yet. I know it doesn't probably help some people, but I hope you could get, you know, be patient. I think, if I do say so, I think we've made some great strides in the last few months, in the short time we've been here. You know, we've put forward some policies that are going to improve things, I believe. It's giving you an opportunity to come up every month and tell us what you want to hear, and we want to hear from the teachers. And again, I really, I can't speak for everybody, but I hope you all know that we do respect you, and we respect your concerns. And I would look forward to having a better school year. And let's see what happens, and hopefully, it's going to be much more positive.
Okay, thank you very much, Martha. Just as a point of note, that both Martha and I are now the senior-most people in the district. We've had the most years than anyone else in the district.
Oh, what a great.
Yes. What a great honor to have that.
For all.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ma. Okay, the next item, unfinished business. I guess we already covered that. Custodians' proposed changes. Mr. Suter?
So, at the last meeting, I discussed the possibility of combining two part-time custodial slots in East Brookfield and making it a full-time slot. In talking with Russ Karlstad, the facilities supervisor, building grounds, and with the principal in East Brookfield, I think it makes a lot of sense to start to get away from part-time workers and invest in full-time workers. I know from the facility's standpoint, there's a lot of times when Russ has the need to move people around and collaborate in different buildings. And you can't do that with part-time staff. Not that they don't do a good job, but it's just, it's not their full-time job, and they, most of them are coming from a full-time job. So when they get to work, I don't know that we're getting as good of a bang for our buck as we would be if someone was committed to the district, it was their full-time job. So basically, we would like to take those two part-time positions at East Brookfield, combine them into one, and hire a full-time person. This would give us someone who will be there till 8:00 at night, or maybe later. Right now, I don't think there's a lot of coverage for events that happen at the school. And it's just a lot of work that needs to be done. They can be trained. And I think it'll, I think we'll get a lot of use out of a full-timer, more so than we would a couple of part-timers. The additional cost to the district is about $15,000 in salary and about $14,000 in benefits. So at this time, we would be able to fund that salary from within the facilities cost center. And we could move money from the various expense accounts for building maintenance and so forth, to fund that position. And until we would, until we get approval from the committee, we wouldn't know if that person would require benefits or not. So I don't know what that cost would be, whether it'd be, you know, a family coverage for health insurance, or an individual coverage, or no coverage at all. But the, you know, the greatest liability, if they were, if they needed health insurance and they required family coverage, would be about $14,000 a year. So we're looking at about a $29,000 expense as we go forward, and we'd have to budget that in the next year's budget for an ongoing, you know, situation. So...
Does anyone have any questions? Russ, did you have anything you'd like to say to this? This is Russ Karlstad. He's our head of maintenance.
Yeah, we're better served by full-time employees, for obvious reasons. There's two part-timers over there. One of those part-timers would be reassigned. We eliminate one of the positions. And that's what Gary and I have been discussing, how to go about that. Best utilize the people we have. And from that perspective, you know, it's unfortunate someone's going to lose a position, but the school district's got to do what it's got to do to keep these buildings going forward. As you know, we put a lot of effort into it this summer, and we don't want to go backwards at all. So... And if I could take a second, just to speak about the Volunteer Day?
Sure.
Because I was out talking with the Bose supplier for the fieldhouse. I was under the impression we were going to have a conversation before anything happened, and do a targeted approach, make sure we know what's going to happen. I've got a lot of plans, I've got a lot of things to be done. And I was hoping that Jay would have called me before he brought this out, so we could have a conversation.
Well, we did talk about it at the meeting. We're just basically going to be doing cosmetics.
All right. Well, I'm worried about liability, getting hurt, and all that kind of stuff. But we need to have a plan of action before we go forward. I'm not against it. The 20th is fine, but it's got to coincide with what I've got planned already. So you and I should have a conversation before we get into it any further. If that's okay with you.
I think we're getting to the point now where we're running out of time. I think this has got to get done.
Oh, it does have to get done. And we have, we had a good start at the site, so let's have another conversation, so we can do a targeted approach of what is going to get done, and how it's going to get done, and everyone can stay safe.
Well, this is going to, the schedule for the 20th, is there a way that you can meet with him this week, Jay, to go over the?
Sure. Yeah, we can meet. Yeah, we're on the same wavelength. We just need to have, we just need to know, we need to have, you know, what's going to happen. And it seems like people are going to show up, so. And get it done.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion, Gary?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking for, is the committee on board with combining those two part-time positions and hiring a full-timer in the place of that, and then again, funding that in the budget going forward in future.
Do I have a motion?
I just have a, I got a question to Gary. Now, by doing this, is this the last school that will be utilizing part-timers like that? I mean, do all the other schools have at least two full-timers?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, the other schools do have part-timers, but most of them are used to cover lunches.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
But each of the other, I guess I?
The other ones have an evening custodian, right.
They each have two full-timers, the other schools. Okay, yeah, I'll make that as a motion to change the two part-timers to a full-timer.
At East Brookfield.
At East Brookfield. An additional full-timer.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, I believe Heather, at last month, asked for some projected kindergarten numbers. Do we have anything tonight on that? Tomlin?
If you'd like to speak about East Brookfield. So, Ms. Soduski is keeping very close track of this. There's been some motion in and out of district. And the numbers, the last number... East Brookfield is the concern.
For East Brookfield, our numbers are low right now. So I've met with the superintendent, and we have a waiting list of either intra-district or school choice that want to come to our building. So we're going to, at the beginning of next week, probably take three off of that list, because our numbers are low. We still want to stay below the number 20. But right now, it's late in the summer, or, you know, so we don't anticipate getting a whole lot more between now and the start of school.
Taking them as, by the date they come in?
Yep, they're all stamped as the date they've applied, just like we did last year when we were only able to take one. This year, we're going to start off with probably three. Okay?
So right now, what do we have for regular? Is it, what, about 17, or?
No, right now, at East Brookfield, we're down to 14.
14?
Yeah.
What about Spencer?
I want to say 108.
Spencer's at 108. At least, they were at the end of last week. Yeah? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any questions, Heather?
We just, you said Wire Village is 108? And how many kindergarten teachers do we currently have?
Five.
Five, okay. Those are good numbers. All right, just checking. Thank you. Yeah, we have much more play, obviously, at Wire, because we have more classes to distribute. Whereas, Mr. Tomlin, we have to be really careful.
Okay, units' leadership reports. We heard from Ma. Did you have anything else?
None.
You're done? Any other union leaders here tonight?
Mr. Tomlin, he doesn't have anything.
Nothing else? Okay, citizen input. Do we have any more citizen input tonight? I don't see any. The next item, committee comments, future agenda topics. One thing I'd like to say before, because I don't want to forget this, we want to have a special meeting. We have a few policy, one policy that we have to address soon before school starts, the opioid policy. And we may have some fundraising requests that need to be approved. So, I was looking at Tuesday, August 23rd. Would that work for the majority of the members?
What was the day? I'm sorry.
Tuesday, August 23rd.
I'm returning from Quebec that day, so I won't be available.
Okay.
And I'm away on vacation that week.
Okay. So we, how about, does any other night of the week besides Tuesday work?
The week of August 30th, I can't do that Tuesday. I could do that Monday. I don't know if that works for anyone.
I could do the 29th.
How about, could we possibly be ready next week for that policy?
I'd take something up for it.
So how about Tuesday, what would that be, the 16th? Is it, would anybody, everyone be available on Tuesday, the 16th?
Yes, I will interrupt my packing to come to a meeting about policy.
We could do maybe a 6:00 for that?
Could we do 6:30?
Oh, so that's right, I'm sorry. Yep.
Can we also try to do the responsible use policy? Because I know, on the tech committee, and we did finish that. And I don't know if it's actually been submitted yet, because there was some miscommunication, but we do have it.
Responsible use policy?
So if we could add that to the list, maybe?
Yeah, it was never brought before the subcommittee.
Acceptable use?
Well, I'll have them email. I told them to email.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we also, Gary, do you think you could get in touch about the waiver for the facility?
Yeah, I'll try to get, yeah. I was actually wondering, would it be beneficial to have the gentleman come out from the insurance company to the meeting? So if there are other questions that come up, just have him come out.
If you could get him to come, yeah, that'd be good. On the Facebook page, we were going to talk about two, right? That night?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Through you to Mr. St. Peter. Did you mention to Mrs. Bertheum about the Family Medical Leave Act policy that we had discussed?
Still waiting to hear back from Legal on that.
Okay. There's another one, too, that SNLA.
That's another one we were talking executive session.
Family Medical Leave Act?
Yes.
The SNLA one, too? I forgot what it's for. No, but there was a second one. SNLA, too. FMLA and SNLA, I believe?
Yeah.
Legal was supposed to be looking into that first.
I'm still waiting for a response back.
Okay.
All right, well, these are, you know, we can finalize the agenda before that. But I think we should have a vote to hold this special meeting on Tuesday, August 16th, at 6:30 here at Wire Village. Motion to have that meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Wendy?
A second.
Seconded by Jason. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay.